It's 5:30 PM and I will call to order the December 11th, 2017 meeting of the MISD Board of Trustees. It is 5:30 PM. Thank you all for coming. Our first agenda item will be a moment of silence followed by the pledge to the US flag. And as a reminder, we have a new tradition, also a pledge to the Texas flag. Before doing any of that, first let me introduce our student who will be leading us in the pledge of allegiance, or pledge of allegiances. Leading the pledge of allegiance and the state pledge today is Midland High School senior, Sidney Wenzel. Sidney is a cadet captain in the Midland High Air Force Junior ROTC. Honors she has received include the Air Force Sergeants Association Award, Sons of Confederate Veterans Award, the AF, the Air Force Junior ROTC Silver Star Community Service Award. She is currently serving as Cadet Corps Executive Officer, and most of her free time is spent focusing on Junior ROTC in multiple ways. Her senior class load includes ROTC IV, Applied Music, English IV, Forensic Science, Economics, and Statistics. Sidney plans on attending Angelo State University to obtain a degree in Physical Therapy. First, if you please join me in a moment of silence. Captain Wenzel?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Captain. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. All right. Item number two, presentations, recognitions, awards, or announcements. Do we have any for this evening? All right, we'll turn to public forum. We have a number of speakers here this evening who have signed up. We have five speakers. I'm going to reserve the last three for the same topic, and the first two are on different topics. First is Steve Mueller. If you'll please come forward. Welcome to the microphone.
Yeah, Steve Miller. Kneeling NFL players, chain migration, Islamic bombers in a distant subway, wildfires, hurricanes, and fake news, these all have one thing in common. They are things that I have absolutely no influence over. But when a principal in my hometown, at my alma mater, takes a dump on tradition by dumping the fight song to allegedly keep our kids safe, I can get off the bench and become a thorn in somebody's side. We all know that politics is local. Political correctness is also. I'm here to say that this PC attempt by the principal does not fly with me or my family or extended family or anybody that I know. This needs to be put on the agenda on next month's meeting. Been playing around with this now since September. The irony that this body enjoys thousands of years of Judeo-Christian momentum. If we don't end political correctness now, we will coast into a barbarianism no one will recognize in the near future. You, school board of Midland, Texas, has, while you sit there, you have culturally appropriated Western civilization by not allowing your constituents, the very people who you're supposed to represent, to ask questions regarding this or to even put it on the agenda so that you can all be on the record for how you stand on this topic. Socratic method is dead in the MISD. You can't ask questions. Is it any wonder we're bringing up the rear in the state for academics? Put Dixie on the agenda. And instead of yielding back the remainder of my time, I'm not just going to sit here and whistle Dixie.
Well, I thought cultural appropriation was a separate topic, but it's not. So let me move to the other three associated speakers to that topic. Let's go. Michael Strange, welcome to the podium.
My name is Michael Strange. I live here in Midland at 3918 North County Road, 1247. Lived here since 1986. I found out very, at the last minute that you were having your meeting. Can you hear me okay?
If you could speak up a little bit. It may just be me. My hearing's not so good, but...
Okay. All right. Okay. I just got a last-minute notification that you're meeting here, and I just wanted you folks to know that I very much agree with Mr. Chris Gafford. So whatever he has to say, count me in. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Strange. Speaking of Mr. Gafford, welcome.
So I'm Chris Gafford, back again. Just like I promised, we'll just do this every month as long as we need to. First, I want to say congratulations to the Lee High School football team and their playoff run, which is great. End of the band for a successful marching season. They also did well. I guess at this point, congratulations to Superintendent Riddick and Principal Van Hooser for keeping everybody safe. We used that political correctness to get rid of Dixie, and we kept everybody safe. Nobody got hurt. Of course, for 56 years now, nobody's been hurt because we played Dixie. But thank God the two of these men were there to protect us all. Can't really say congratulations, though, to the district. And I'm sure y'all are going to get to your Texas Academic Performance Report, and you'll say, hey, it's an improvement over last year. But before we break our arms patting ourselves on the back, let's talk about what it really shows, a need for y'all to focus on education and not politically correct trendy hot-button issues like Southern symbology. So I don't want to give away the prize, but just a couple of things. As far as us compared to the state average, mastered grade level, six points below the state average. Meets' grade level, 10 points low. Approaches' grade level, eight points low. Meets or exceeds progress, two points below the state average. Out of 26 groups of students, 3rd through 12th grade, only one of those groups, one, beats the state average. That's terrible. Your teachers have a turnover rate above the state average despite making more money than the state average, but we're focused on things like Dixie, on the fight song. Your central administration people make 14% more than the state average. State average is $100,000. We're paying the people over there in the ivory tower $114,000 a year. So is that extra money going for the political correct coverage, or I don't know exactly what that's for? For whatever reason, Mr. Van Hooser and Riddick still have time to focus on the fight song. Mr. Van Hooser's leading Lee High School. He should be focused on secondary education. Yet 30%, we're 30% below the state average as far as students taking SAT and ACT. When it comes to career and college readiness, the number-one thing I would say that Lee High School is for, and Midland High School, we're below the state average. So how does getting rid of Dixie improve any of these numbers? That's y'all's job, to improve those numbers. That's the administrator's job, to improve those numbers. But instead, we're focused on Dixie, something that hadn't been a problem since the beginning of MISD or since the beginning of Lee High School. It's time to put Dixie on your meeting. It's time to make an agenda item. Some of y'all are up for reelection next year. Let us know where you stand. Vote on it so we know how to vote on you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gafford. Mr. McAfee, John McAfee.
Good evening to the school board, also to members of the audience here. I want to qualify. First of all, I'm not here to debate what has been said by anyone else, but I will take particular position on a couple of points that were brought out. One of them is that nobody has been hurt by the playing of that particular song. You have to qualify what you mean by the definition "hurt" and what instruments are being used. Now, if you're talking about sticks and stones, they've not broken anybody's bones in reference to that. But words, words have been very, very cruel in the lyrics of that particular song. I admire the instrumentation of Dixie just a moment ago, but it's the lyrics that bothers me. You see, the lyrics reach back to the time when they were in the land of cotton, and I know who was picking it. I know who was being abused to ensure that that was gotten to the market. I know how individuals profited off the back of indigent individuals who were not educated to the point or not in particular position to do anything about it because actually the law, according to Dret Scott, I believe it was 1843, it may have been 53, but it says you had a right to property. So therefore, anybody below that 36-30 line, which we refer to as the Mason-Dixon, if you were of color, you had no rights. You had no right to protest. I've been here roughly 32 years. Came here, had three sons to go through Lee High School, two daughters to go through Midland High School. I love their education. I love their experience. But I did not ever feel comfortable paying my money to go to a football game and being offended by the song that was being played that was insulting me and people like me. I held my ground. I didn't say anything, one, because I was a part of the administration. I thought working within would always be the best way to make particular changes. But there were very, very few avenues to do that. I'm glad...
If you'll please wrap up. That's your time is up. Please wrap it up.
Thank you. But I'm glad in this day and time I'm able to say some things that I may have wanted to say 32 years ago, and again, without offending anyone, because I appreciate the right to every person to speak and every person to have their opinion. But I thank the board, and I thank the administration for doing the right thing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McAfee. All right. I think we're going to switch topics. John Arroyo. Mr. Arroyo, welcome.
Like you said, my name is John Arroyo. I'm an ex-teacher here in Midland, Texas. A few weeks ago, the district had meetings in the community. I attended one of those meetings where they had some kind of program where people were invited to go and tell their do's and don'ts that the school was doing. Could you tell the audience what the results were of those findings?
That's your question to us, Mr. Arroyo?
Well, I was told not to ask a question. Shall I form it a different way?
Well, I'll, let me answer it this way, and I'll defer to Mr. Riddick to make sure I'm correct. And the results of those meetings are posted online. If you are unable to read them or access them online, then that's something we need to address with you. But they are online.
Were they positive?
Well, once you, I mean, there were three questions asked. I'll turn it over to Mr. Riddick.
Right. Mr. Arroyo, what I can do is I have Ms. Elise, Dr. Elise Cale, who's here. She can talk to you through those results. We're actually going to be on the 20th hosting an opportunity for the community to hear what we've gathered from every meeting that we've held so far and present that out to our community. Overwhelmingly, there are three large themes that came across the meeting, and Ms. Cale can talk to you through that, and she'll meet with you just shortly after we finish.
Well, I'm sure the public here would like to know.
Yes, sir. And so publicly, what we've done is we've posted it to our website, and on our website it has clarification from every meeting where items raised most amongst our members of the community from each of the meetings, and it ranks what that looks like for every meeting that we've held so far, to include one with students, which was held just about a week or so ago, that we held with our student body. We'll continue to have our meetings going out into the future. They may not be designed like the one that you attended, may have been at Martinez Bakery, but I'm not sure if that's the one that you attended or not.
Yes, it was.
I thought so. But there will be opportunities for us to engage our community around the work that we're doing. She'll meet with you here shortly so that she can give that to you. We have it very public for our community, and we will be giving information to our news media so that they can have the culmination of what we've been doing so far.
Okay. Something else I'd like to say. The last few years, for I don't know how many years, the same schools seem to be not rising to the state level. We have a new superintendent. Tell us what's being done differently to raise the scores of those kids in those schools.
Well, I can again refer you, well, one, I hope you'll stay for the presentation on our status report on the Midland on the Move projects we have underway. Also, I would refer you to the MISD website, Midland on the Move, and more specifically, as you know from having attended the meetings, there were three questions asked for those in attendance. What do you want us to stop doing? What do you want us to keep doing? And what do you want us to start doing? And the results of those community input is on our website, and there'll be more to come in the future. Your other specific question is part of our Midland on the Move, and there are lots of things at work. In fact, we'll be discussing almost every agenda item under our action items in district reports has to do with that question.
Thank you. I've been out of the teaching field for about 11 or 12 years now, and I taught at several schools here in Midland. And I had an idea. We have an association here called Retired Teachers. And I was laying in bed one night thinking, what can we do for these kids? And I thought, maybe you guys can go and talk to the Association of Retired Teachers and ask them, can you volunteer at these schools that are low performing and help those schools out? Or maybe we can give you a stipend. I don't know if you can or not. I don't know the budget that you have. But that was the idea that I had, because those teachers are just sitting there crocheting, drinking coffee, maybe traveling some. I am willing to go to help the schools that are not performing to par. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Arroyo. All right. That concludes all the folks that signed up to speak at public forum this evening. We'll now move, it is now 5:51 PM, and we'll move to our public hearing on the District Texas Academic Performance Report. Do I ask for anyone that wants to address us regarding that? Is that correct?
Yes. And so at this point in time, if there's a community member, they may approach for the public hearing, and you'll have, Monica, are you presenting before? She'll have present, no, yes. She has a presentation further down that we have in regards to the paper report.
So is there anyone that would like to address the board regarding the Texas Academic Performance Report?
I wanted to talk about it when we had a...
Oh, the results are on our website as well.
That's great. Go look at it.
All right. Well, if that, I'll tell you what, we'll, when we, is there, wait, hold on a second. Well, I'm, it's on the website, and we didn't, it's quite lengthy, and if you, if you're, if you hear something this evening and you would like to address us, please raise your hand and come forward. All right. Anyone else? All right. It's now 5:53, and we'll conclude the public hearing. Now turning to the consent agenda. 5A, class-size waivers. 5B, financials. 5C, monthly expenditures. 5D, budget amendments and transfers. 5E, bid number 17-34 regarding technology items. 5F, bid number 17-35 regarding copy paper. 5G, contracts over $100,000. 5H, personnel appointments. 5I, board meeting minutes. All those items are on pages nine through 86 of our board packet. Board members, are there any of those items that need to be pulled for any reason whatsoever? If not, they'll all be deemed approved by consent. Turning now to our district reports. Item 6A, the trustee continuing education report. It was on page 91 of our board packet, but we also have an additional walk-in cover page. Do I, you have that? Oh, that's right. I do have it. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The report item is that all board members have met their requirements for all the legal educational requirements that each of us have serving on this board. Any questions about that? All right. Next, district report 6B, board goals. Information begins on page 93 of our board packet, and have a report on our constraint progress measure 2.1 this evening. Ms. Cale?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This evening, we're talking about the percent of students at improvement-required campuses and how our goal is for them to reduce to 0% by 2020. We established the baseline last year when we were at 21%. Happy to report that due to the reduction of improvement-required campuses in the district, we are now at 9%. We had a goal of 10% for this school year as we continue to look forward to declining membership in improvement-required campuses. So that is very good news to move, to report. We've moved from about 5,200 kids to about 2,300 kids in improvement-required campuses, and we look to see that to continue decline, excuse me, to decline. Does anyone have any questions?
So last year, 21% of our students were enrolled in an improvement-required campus. Our goal was to reduce that to 10% this year with the ultimate goal of eliminating it to zero. This year, we beat the goal, we're at 9%, which even then is unacceptable, but it's a tremendous step forward. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
So that's towards the, I mean, that's, this is a progress, go-progress update, right? Because at the end of the year, we could be actually lower for the year?
Well, actually, the way we have this established, it's based on Snapshot, which is the last Friday in October, so that we have a consistent measure each school year. So by the end of this school year, we won't know until the accountability reports come out next August.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Look forward to continued progress in that regard. Is there anything more on that that you'd like to add, Ms. Cale?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. 6C, our innovation update, system of great schools. Information begins on page 98 of our board packet. This is part of our Midland on the Move update.
Yes. What I would like to do is introduce you to Rajiv Bajaj, our executive advisor with the system of great schools. Many of you have not had the opportunity to hear from him, and he is going to enlighten you this evening.
Rajiv, welcome. It's always a pleasure to see you. Thank you very much for all your great help to the district.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to meet everybody, and thanks for the opportunity tonight. So excited, again, my name is Rajiv Bajaj. I am part of the System of Great Schools Technical Assistance Network, and I've had the pleasure of working with Midland ISD over the last six months or so. And excited tonight to do a couple of things. One is just kind of reflect on the progress that you all have made over the last six months or so. Do a little bit of introductory work in terms of my personal background, and then talk about the work ahead. You all have made great strides, as Elise was just mentioning, and there's a road ahead as well. So I'll run through a few slides. Feel free to stop me at any point. Really just excited to engage with you all. So just quickly, on my personal background, I actually come to the work in education as the kid of Indian immigrants, and my family story actually in the country is about education. My dad actually came to the United States in the 60s to pursue a master's degree, and so I have committed myself to supporting educational opportunities across the country. And so I started in technology, kind of left the technology sector to become a fourth-grade teacher in New York City, and then have spent the last 15 years or so in a variety of roles, really focused on this idea of educational improvement for all students, specifically our most vulnerable. And so just really appreciative of the opportunity to be here in Midland as you all take these bold steps.
Rajiv, let me, if I may interrupt you just for...
Please.
Perhaps the benefit of some of our public audience members, as the board adopted a theory of action that we wanted to be a system of great schools and go to managed instruction to earn autonomy to a system of great schools, as part of that, the Texas Education Agency offered this past year for schools to apply to become part of the System of Great Schools Technical Assistant Network in which the state would choose from among the applicants. They chose, I think, eight districts.
Correct.
We were one of the eight chosen, and as a result of having been chosen, we get the benefit of many resources to help us along that journey to become a system of great us along that journey to become a system of great schools. One of the most important features is there are folks like yourself who have had specific expertise in making the system of great schools for districts, and that you bring that expertise, provided for by the Texas Education Agency, to this district, and that's part of what you've been working on the last six months with us to, to be our counselor, our advisor, our helper.
That's exactly right. And, and that work via TEA continues through a cohort model that, that you are a part of, to continue to do that work.
All right. I interrupted you. Please go ahead.
No, no.
Thank you.
Great. So thought we'd spend a second here, just talking a little bit about how the MISD board and the, and the work of leadership has really redoubled your efforts to put kids first. Just to take a second and pause on the work that's gone on so far, kind of a year at a glance, and some of the work within the network that, that you just spoke about in terms of the SGS network. You'll see in front of you kind of a year at a glance. You all have participated in the Lone Star Governance process. You've obviously launched and, and activated a best-in-class superintendent in the form of Mr. Riddick. You've committed, to President Davis's point, building a system of great schools over the next decade. You've also begun this deep work of implementation that we'll talk about in terms of some of our updates. And then the last point in terms of just the work of the last six months is really about deepening and extending your relationship with community. So the listen and learn work that has come up a couple of times during the evening is very much a testament to that two-way conversation that you're enabling, and I think a real credit to the dialogue that you're continuing to build with community as you define things like, what does a great school mean to every Midland family? So those are kind of the highlights as it relates to sort of getting off and running on the system of great schools work. I will say a couple of things. President Davis mentioned some of the work of the Technical Assistance Network through SGS. You all in Midland are leading the way in this cohort of eight other districts. I think the peers in other districts are looking to Midland in the deep work that you're doing day over day to move this bold transformation agenda. So I think just a testament to you all on that front. And we've talked a little bit about kind of creating the conditions for this work to happen. So whether that's the listen and learn, whether that's some of the work of defining a great school, whether that's launching the call for quality schools and some of the partner work we'll talk about, you all are laying that important groundwork that will lead to ongoing student success, and I deeply believe that. And in the work that I've seen in other districts and other places, I will say, these are the kind of foundational things that help drive that change. I'll just spend just a second talking about, you know, the work that you all have done over this six months. I think, from my perspective, as I've seen this work happen in other places, you know, districts take two, three, even five years to do some of this foundational work that you all have done in this first cycle. So just a testament and kudos to the folks on the stage, the community, and the strong central office team leading some of this work, and obviously the educators that are so committed to Midland kids and families. Spend a second here just talking about kind of the time for bold action and continuing to focus on this. The real sort of exercise here is about the deep implementation of the transformation agenda, and so as we think about this, it's about building the conditions for executing on this work. And we'll talk about some of that, the work that's happened so far. But just a, just a call to continue that bold leadership that you all have exhibited, and to continue to push forward on some of these bolder things, whether, whether it's, whether it's looking for partnerships in the district, looking outside to other partners that could flood educational opportunities into Midland. The real opportunity is now to keep our foot on the gas on some of those fronts, and so, so sort of lay this out to say, you know, often as this work happens in other places, sometimes they look back and say, you know, we could have been bolder. We could have done more. I think as you all are in the beginning stages of this journey, just really emphasizing this idea to continue to be bold and, and continue the courage and leadership that you've shown so far. A quick run-through in terms of the Midland On The Move priorities. Again, Midland On The Move is sort of the broad transformation agenda that you all have laid out. And so I'll quickly tick through the kind of four big kind of rocks that exist, the kind of four big priority buckets. The first is listen and learn, and this is sort of a broad community engagement set of activities that you all are deeply invested in through this listen and learn effort, but that will continue on through the weeks, months, and years to come. The second is the work of the instructional process and continuing to focus on that meaningful interaction between teachers and kids in classrooms. And so the work that's begun over the last couple of years, continuing to deepen and support that work is the second big priority area that we've sort of articulated via Midland and the move, On The Move, and that continues to proceed apace. The third is kind of what we're calling Know Our Schools. And within Know Our Schools is all the work that we're talking about as it relates to the system of great schools. And so starting with kind of a shared and common definition of what a great school looks like, we're really engaged in a process of building a school performance framework. And by that, I mean, what is a shared definition by the community of what great looks like? And so that's quantitative measures, that's qualitative measures of success, and really an idea of how we have a common language for talking about school quality. And the third thing within this bucket through this, through this first cycle is thinking about innovative partnership opportunities. So I think many of you have heard about the call for quality schools. This is an effort to attract and create sort of opportunities for our existing educators in the district to come up with innovative and bold ideas to transform our district, as well as to engage with others in the community and across the state and nation on partnering with us to create educational opportunities. And we've been, I think, blown away by the response in terms of the quality of applications, the excitement and enthusiasm for folks to do this deep work in Midland. So excited to share more about those details as the work unfolds. And then the fourth is around central office redesign. This idea of sort of the central office serving schools, not vice versa, we're really putting schools on top of this effort. And so that customer service orientation that many folks have talked about, and really thinking about how we align our resources to some of the things I'm, I'm talking about at, at this level, which is, how does, how do we create a system that puts high-quality schools at the center, and all that we do sort of maps to that? So I know I'm, in many ways, preaching to the converted here, but as we talk about some of this progress, that alignment in the budget cycles and the work that will continue in the, in this cycle and in the years ahead, really excited about continuing that alignment. I'll keep going quickly here and just tick through some of the things that are in motion right now. And again, feel free to stop me with any questions or thoughts. Listen and learn tour, we talked about in terms of that work, that again, will continue with an ongoing dialogue and engagement efforts with the community, both from the district but also at the school level. Call for Quality Schools is really our partnership effort to really bring, bring a sort of process and a structure to how we might partner with, with great organizations and individuals interested in doing work in Midland. The School Performance Framework is that shared definition of great. I'll talk quickly about the Transformation Zone, which is another opportunity from the Texas Education Agency to really focus on our highest need and, and most vulnerable populations and campuses. So the Transformation Zone is a grant opportunity that Midland ISD has applied for, that really creates additional focus and the potential for additional resources to plan what radically re-envisioning some of our highest need campuses might look like.
That's another new TEA grant program.
Correct.
We recently applied, and I guess, do we have an idea of, is the, do you know whether TEAs indicated when they might? January, okay.
Yep.
We'll hope to know in January that we're, whether we're among the grant winners on that. Okay, thank you.
Yep. You know, cautiously optimistic and hopeful that that will come to fruition via, via our friends at TEA. And then the last is what we're calling sort of a school portfolio and management process. And this is really about identifying the strengths and opportunities of every one of our campuses. So we heard through the beginning part of the board meeting, some of the opportunities for growth and, and some of the challenges that some of our campuses face. The school portfolio and management exercise is really about identifying the strengths and opportunities of our campuses and figuring out what those individual supports and, and potential needs are at a campus-by-campus level, really starting with our most priority and sort of, and most vulnerable campuses, but really looking at the entire portfolio of our schools. And that very much ties into this idea of becoming a system of great schools. Many of you have seen this chart, so I won't belabor the point. This is the sort of geographic map that speaks to some of the innovative campus opportunities, some of the magnet campuses we have already, some of the IR schools are priority and focus schools. All that, by way of sort of backdrop to say that we have a real opportunity to, to double down and spend some significant energy and time, obviously focusing on, on our IR campuses, but thinking about the overall Midland growth and the opportunity to build schools that reflect the needs of every kid in the district. And so as we continue to do this work, we'll, we'll obviously focus on our IR campuses and some of our priority and focus needs, but really excited about continuing that dialogue about the individual needs of every campus. And this is just kind of a, a map that speaks to some of that initial kind of groundwork that'll help support that effort. And so last slide for me. As we think about the work ahead, we really envision a partnership with you all on the stage here. Kind of three specific opportunities I'll call out as we continue this work and look forward to, to hearing others that may come to mind for you all. The first is this ongoing community engagement. Many of you on the stage, I think all of you participated in the listen and learn events. So we envision continuing that ongoing dialogue with community. It may take the form of different types of events, school-based events, a whole series of activities, but that ongoing community dialogue will, will continue through the course of the school year and onward. So welcome your continued participation and leadership on that front. The second is the call for quality schools. As we've received significant interest in partnership, we really are excited about your input on opportunities for where there might be interesting partnership opportunities that you see as this work unfolds. And then the third is what we're calling a transformation workshop. Excited about digging deep, I, I've sort of scratched the surface on a number of issues as I, as I've given the sort of headlines here, but as we dig deeper in the form of a transformation workshop, excited to talk about some of these content areas at the next level of depth, and to brief you at the next level of detail, and to engage with you for your feedback and, and support. So happy to take some questions or thoughts from folks. Thanks so much for this, for this opportunity to share some of the exciting work going on.
Questions?
I was gonna ask you, I mean, obviously, you're working with TEA, and what, is there other partnerships, other states that you're working with that are, have work similar going on compared to what we have going on?
Mr. Marquez, great question. So we're doing, we do a fair amount of work around the country, and there, you know, there are a number of places that have taken on system of great schools, like kind of theories of action. Cities like Baltimore and Philadelphia and Camden, New Jersey, and Denver, Colorado have all taken on system of great schools type opportunities, really thinking about, how do we create high-quality autonomous schools? And so this theory of action, I think, has gotten traction because it really puts kids at the center and really focuses on building supports around that central theme that's, you know, families pick schools, they don't pick school systems. And so as you, as we think about that, driving all our energy and focus to the individual needs of kids is very much that, that theme. And so, so again, you know, I will say, the groundwork and the sort of forward-leaning posture that Midland has taken in the first cycle and the first six months of this, to me, is tremendously heartening, you know, for the kids and families of Midland. Again, it takes years for, for many of the districts that I'm talking about to make the progress that you all have made. And obviously, there's more work to do, but I will say, you all are leading the pack.
Well, thank you. I'm glad to hear that. We're in the Southern Hemisphere, we're the only one out here.
Yep.
How much of a distinction do you make between the so-called priority-focused schools and campuses that are IR?
Mr. Fuller, it's a great question. I guess, I mean, to my, to my mind, whatever the designation is, whether it's a federal designation or a state designation, priority, focus, IR, all have kids that, you know, are, you know, we're, we're not meeting kids' needs in, in many of those campuses. And so from my perspective, obviously, IR is, is a specific focus in the, the near term, but we don't, the priority and focus schools are very much in that same conversation, I would say. So from my perspective, it's, how are we ensuring every kid in the district is getting a high-quality education that prepares them for a college or career? And so against that backdrop, you, you obviously have to prioritize with limited resources and, and, and time and energy. But the, the IR and priority-focused campuses, in my mind, all, all are in that, that sort of most urgent, most important category.
If we are fortunate enough to get the grant or whatever, how will that, in your opinion, impact the elimination of the so-called priority-focused schools?
So a couple of thoughts on this one. The, the first I would say is that it would, it would definitely allow significant time and energy to, to radically re-envision our IR campuses and those priority and focus campuses. So it, it's gonna create the space by which we can think about what a dramatically different set of learning experiences might look like. And so in, in my mind, what the Transformation Zone is doing is really creating the opportunity and, and the set of tools to think about our, specifically our IR campuses and then our priority and focuses, focus campuses, in a way that allows them to innovate and sure, and ensure they're meeting every kid's needs.
You said that there were a lot of applicants when there was a call for quality schools, and I know we're just in the review stage, but could you give us a taste of what some of those potential partners might be, look like?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. So I will say, we sort of laid out a partner process that's, that sort of asked for kind of three different types of partner opportunities, what we're calling sort of whole-school partnerships, partners that could work with us on a whole-campus effort, others that might be programmatic in nature, they may have a specific focus area like STEM or computer science or, or arts, or whatever the case may be. And then the third bucket of partnerships that we requested applications on are talent partnerships. How do we continue to build a pipeline of high-quality, talented educators that can lead our classrooms and our schools? And across all three of those, we were very heartened. We've got a significant number of whole-school partners that have a significant track record of results in the state and across the country. In the programmatic, in the programmatic bucket, we saw partner opportunities across a variety of topics, from computer science to STEM and others. And then on the talent partnerships, we saw national organizations, state organizations, leaders in the talent space, all coming with really exciting and innovative ideas to, to Midland. So really, to your point, we're in the, the review stage, but just really excited and enthusiastic about the potential for partnership across all three of those strands, you know, matching the individual needs of whether it be campuses or the district writ large.
The, the transformation workshop that you have at the end of January, first of February, is that a board workshop, or is that a community workshop? Who's involved in that?
So our, our hope is that this is a board workshop, where we get to brief you at the next level of detail. Hopefully, you don't have to listen to me gas-on for 20 minutes, but an opportunity to engage and, and talk through some of the details of the work that I'm sharing right now.
Okay. I'm, I'm interested in, I guess, the last line of that Transformation Zone where it says, provide leaders and teachers with increased flexibility and autonomy with accountability to serve their students. So are we talking about a teacher-by-teacher basis, or are we talking about development?
Mr. Murray, I think I got the question, which is-
Okay.
-are we talking about flexibility and autonomy at the teacher level or at the campus level? This is very much a campus concept, and it, and it ties in directly with the theory of action in terms of a system of great schools. So the Transformation Zone would be focused on connecting it to Mr. Fuller's point, how do, how do we re-envision opportunities on our campuses and give leaders the flexibility and supports they need in exchange for that autonomy? That's kind of- That's kind of the handshake, which is you have more autonomy, you have the ability to pick your team, you have resources, and then you're accountable for student achievement. And so that's the handshake we're working towards.
Any other questions? All right, again, thank you so much for your help. We, we appreciate your, you know, going through this process. It's new for most of us and so it is so helpful to have experience, expertise to help us along the way to make sure that we do it right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you all, and thanks for all the West Texas hospitality from a guy from New Jersey, so take care.
All right, next is District Report 6D, our Texas Academic Performance Report, which is a summary of the taper report that's on our website. And for those that, after hearing this brief presentation, have any questions or would like to address this, I will reopen the public hearing for that purpose. By way of explanation, we have those public hearings at the start of our meetings to really accommodate the public members who have something to say, would like to be heard, and then for whatever reason cannot or choose not to stay for the remainder of the meeting. So, but we will reopen that hearing in case there's anyone else, anyone that would like to come forward after hearing this presentation. Thank you.
Great, good, good evening, board members. I'm here tonight to provide an overview of our district's annual performance report for the 2016-2017 school year. Because this report is a year-end review report, I would like to make note that much of the information within this report has already been presented and discussed in previous presentations throughout the school year. And corresponding actions for improvement were taken when we originally received the information from the state. For example, the STAR scores that we see tonight were reviewed by campus and district officials when we received them initially. This annual performance report is simply various pieces of data put together to close out the previous school year. We are required by the State of Texas to provide this end-of-year status report within 90 days of the release of the Texas Academic Performance Report or the taper. The release date this year was November 16th. This release date allows for any accountability rating appeals that were submitted to the Texas Education Agency to be noted in the taper. We did not appeal any accountability ratings, so therefore no data has changed for us. So there are various components that are required by the Texas Education Code to be included in this district annual performance report. I will take you through all six tonight. The first is the taper, the Texas Academic Performance Report. And that report provides various student performance achievement data along with staff and student demographic data to essentially provide an overall profile of the school. So when we look at the taper, much of the information provides both subject and grade level information for the percent of students at the approaches grade level standard, the meets grade level standard, and the masters grade level standard. In addition, it also provides a breakdown of the percent of students who met or exceeded progress on their assessments. I have provided page numbers for you as well. So if you would want to follow along or if you would like to reference at a later point, these are the page numbers that correspond to the taper report. When we look at all subjects and grade levels combined for the percentage of our students at each performance level, so at approaches, at meets, and masters, you can see that we still trail the state averages. But we are performing better than the region in all three performance areas, which has not always been the case. As a reminder, the approaches grade level standard is considered the passing standard for our students. And masters is the equivalent to the old Level 3 Advanced Performance that we used to see. We are also positively trending upward in all of these areas. And I want to make note that for the met or exceeded progress percentages, while the state saw a slight decline in the number of students meeting or exceeding progress going from 62 to 61 this spring, we as a district saw a 1% increase in the number of students meeting or, or exceeding progress where we went from 58 to 59.
I've got a quick question. So the, the state, is that, are we being bucketed with all districts or is that all districts?
Yes, so the state percentage that you see here is all districts combined.
Okay, thank you for that.
No problem. Throughout the taper report, you'll see that, you know, we tend to, we're still struggling in reading and writing, but we are really doing well and showing major growth in math. And that is what we have been seeing in previous presentations as well. I did want to make note of the, the one area where we did meet the state average was in eighth grade mathematics. Students in eighth grade are held to meeting standard through the Student Success Initiative. And therefore they have a few opportunities to pass the STAR test to demonstrate mastery. During the first testing, first round of testing in March of last year, the eighth grade students met the state average in math with the percent of students who met the approaches level performance at 75%. When those students who were not successful the first time were able to retest, the MIS, Midland ISD, and the state had an additional 10% pass. So we met the state requirement or we met the state passing percentages both at the first administration and when we look cumulatively at the 85%. Another celebration that I wanted to note, notate, and we heard this through our PBMAS report earlier this year as well. For, for many years, we have struggled as a district with how our ELL students have performed. And so another area of celebration was the performance of our bilingual students this past year. So when looking at the percent of students that exceeded progress on SAR last year in math and in reading, our bilingual students not only outperformed our very own district averages, but they also outperformed both the region and the state averages when we look at the percent of students exceeding progress from one year to the next.
Say yay to that.
The taper report also provides additional performance measures dealing with state assessment and, and also additional measures that deal with attendance, post-secondary readiness, and staff and student demographic data, really to provide an overall campus picture. I'm not necessarily gonna go through every single one of those components tonight, but all of these different components are listed within the taper report. So the next component of the annual performance report that is required is the district's accreditation status and reporting out of the campus performance objectives for the 2016-2017 school year. So in February of this past year, the district was assigned a status of accredited, and we were therefore not required to take any specific action as a result of the designation. Within your packet, you will find the campus performance objectives, each campus included, within their 2016-2017 Campus Improvement Plan, which the, which you guys approved last fall. These were the objectives that campuses worked to achieve last school year. And these have been updated to reflect the current needs of the school within the current school year and included in the current year's improvement plans for the schools. And those were also board-approved earlier on this school year. The next section of the required report deals with finances. So due to the nature of reporting years, the required financial information is actually from the 15-16 school year. So out of date at this point, but it's still required to be a part of the annual performance review report. So within your packet, you have the PMS Financial Standard Report. And this includes financial data from the 2015-16 school year, and it's lagging data at this point. So any questions that you may have on this report, I'm going to defer to Mrs. Darlene Moss if you have any at this point. The next section is about violent and criminal incidents. We must provide information to the board and to the community about violent or criminal incidents that occur on a campus along with findings from surveys as required by the SAFE and Drug-Free Communities Act each year. So within your packet, you have the Report on Violent and Criminal Incidents. This chart identifies all available discipline codes and provides district-wide and campus total counts of violent and criminal incidents that occurred in the 2016-2017 school year. This information is used by TEA to identify campuses in the state that are considered persistently dangerous schools. If you'll notice that the incident rates at all of our campuses are under 1%, therefore all of our campuses are deemed safe. PADAP, our Palmer, Palmer Drug Abuse Program of Midland, conducted a survey of sixth through 12th grade students this past year and have provided information about drug and alcohol usage. The results of that survey are listed. I do want to make note that percentages for usage are slightly higher than what was reported year prior. So it's really important that our, our counselors are given this information and they have been, and they are working with certain programs on their campuses in order to address these needs. That particular so, survey that was conducted by PADAP also asked students to identify which support student, support systems they had and encourage, that they had to help them encourage them to be successful. These included rules being enforced, teacher expectations, school pride, and parents being proud. And those are the percentages of students that listed these particular components as, as being a support in their life. And then finally, the last section that is required as part of this annual performance report is the Student Performance in Post-Secondary Institutions Report produced annually by the Higher Education Coordinating Board. So this report by the Higher Educating, Educating Board provides information on student performance in post-secondary institutions during the first year they are enrolled after high school graduation. So these are graduates that graduated during the 2014-2015 school year, so lagging data as well. Student performance is measured by the GPA that they attained in their first year in that public institution of higher education. And as we look to ensure really more of our students are college and career-ready, we have made the decision to go ahead and purchase a new software program that will help us track students that are not found on this report. So you'll notice that there are students that are not trackable or not found within this report. The Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board is only able to track those students that go to Texas universities. So we want to be able to track students that go out of state as well, and this new software will allow us to do that. So at this time next year, hopefully we will be able to tell you where all of those not-found students are.
Yeah, how much data or how far does that go back as far as being able to track each one of the classes? Classification, I mean, as far as like 15 graduates or 16 graduates and beyond, how far does that go back? Or is it just year by year?
Actually, we are able to load our students, I want to say that we can go back to 2010. So we are able to historically look at where students possibly have gone. So you'll see here early college, Lee High and Midland High, and then Coleman High School as well. So any of this information can be found both in hard copy and on our district website. Both, both on our district website and on hard copy. So if you have any questions, you can feel free to contact the Accountability Office. Anybody's able to, to contact us and we can answer your questions. But I'm gonna go ahead and let Jeff.
For just a point of clarification on two things. The first one is very specific to comments that were made earlier. I want to make sure it's very clear, very specific to SAT/ACT results. Just a point of clarification, our district results for SAT/ACT was above the state average and above the region average by more than a percent. Lee High School was very specifically above state and region results in SAT and ACT in both, in all areas. There weren't any lagging areas. Another point of clarification, and this is very specific to the article in the paper this morning, and the results of the SAFE and Drug Free information that was released and is, is part of what you just saw. So when we do the survey, we pick our very most-at-risk group of students. It's a very small sampling, but we pick most-at-risk students to conduct that survey because that's where we need the most immediate resources and help. So it's unfair to necessarily say that's a sampling of the school district in a whole, as the, as I felt like the, you know, it might have read, but those results are indicating generally our credit recovery students and students that are at risk of dropping out. So two points I wanted to make sure to, to be clear on.
I, I appreciate that because, you know, our transparency with our public, you know, I think we're doing a, a great job, an even greater job. So I really appreciate you sharing that with us, to let us know that we're not trying to, per se, dilute something, that you're actually trying to use the information to, to help our students. And, and that's, that's, you know, I commend the district for doing that because those are the kids that we're trying to help through this process of their education. And, and if we, and if we can use a resource to identify problems and issues so we can have a, some type of resolution to improve their education, you know, like I said, I'm highly impressed with that. And I appreciate you bringing that up.
Well, we, we definitely own that data. It is our data and it's accurate data, and it's self-reported by students through the survey. But we very specifically target groups of students. So it's not necessarily indicating the entire district, but it is indicate, indicative of our very at-risk students, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Can I ask one question? On this template for the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, is that a state template or is that something the way we're tracking it?
No, that, that's actually a report that's put out by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board.
I was just curious because our goal is mentioned right under it. So we're not focusing anything here where we've taken kids and, and given them so that they could. I was just.
Yeah, and that, that information is collected or is reported through the taper report. So there is a section within the taper report that looks specifically at college-ready graduates. And then there's a section that looks specifically at college and career-ready graduates.
Okay, thank you.
So there has been a change in the definition for college and career-ready. In previous years, a student could be deemed college and career-ready, and there were three different ways that a student could meet that definition. The definition is now changing, and so there are going to be a multiple, there's gonna be multiple ways that a student can potentially be deemed college and career-ready. And one of those ways is by earning an industry certification. So we are excited about that.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Oh, let me call reopen the public hearing on our Texas Academic Performance Report. It is now 6:40 PM, and I will welcome anyone that would like to address the board during this reopen public hearing. Mr. McAfee?
Yes, sir. Thank you. First of all, I want to congratulate the district for such a very, very fine report. But I had a particular concern, and my main concern was not here to respond to coming tonight, to the individuals who spoke in reference to the song. My main concern was Stuart Doreen's writing on today and the article highlighting drug use, alcohol use, and the age level. I'm glad Mr. Horner quantified that we have just a small sampling, but the general public would take that as this is indicative of MISD. There's a difference between 1% of our students being affected and 0.01 because if you're just taking a sampling of 50 people, then it's going to skew the results. And more than likely, it's not going to come out as well as it would if you tell me that I'm going to take 5,000 students and survey them and see what kind of percentages I'm going to get. Any student to me that's affected by drugs is one too many. But I don't want the public having the perception of this particular district, which I do love, as simply that we infested with a lot of drug-infested students and that we're reaching down to the age that they're not being taught early enough because I think the youngest AGA was 12. But if that's an outlier, you got 50 people and 49 of them are 17 and older, and only one is 12. That's misleading to the public about severity of the problem as it affects age level. So I would hope give Mr. Doreen a call and let him know that the Palmer Drug Abuse Report is a very, very minute sampling of the students, and it's aimed directly at those students who simply are most in danger of themselves and to the community. Thank you.
Anyone else like to come forward? All right, 6:43 PM, and I will close for the final time the public hearing on our academic performance report. And with this, I'll say, we are, in fact, very pleased with the progress, but it's our expectation that it will continue and continue and continue. There is much to be done. All right. Now turning to our action items. First, 7A, our AE exhibit. The information begins on page 228 of our packet. Ms. Robertson?
Good evening, Board. The main reason we brought AE exhibit to you today is if you look under Student Outcome Goal 2, Goal Progress Measure 2, and there is a sentence there that had been previously approved by you all, but between transmission from us to TASB and back was removed. And so we wanted to make sure that that was there so our staff, our teachers, everyone knows what "on track" means. That sentence is very short but is very important. And so that is why we're bringing AE back. And while we were looking at it, we went ahead and cleaned up a few things that we needed to also fix, which we tried to make our baseline consistent, which is on the parentheses at the end of almost every single goal, just to make sure if we wanted to go back in a year or two and we couldn't remember where on earth did we come up with that initial baseline, it's going to be here, nice and clean, so we can always go back and reference. And then under Student Outcome Goal 3, we had to correct some numbers there with our annual targets. And other than that, those are the only corrections, and we do believe we have it nice and clean and ready, and we don't anticipate touching this or AE Local until next August or September when we can fill in those X and Ys for you all. That's when we'll, at the end of this year, we can fill that in and then update maybe one or two other things we might bring for your approval at that point.
All right, any questions? All right, this is an action item. Motion by Mr. Marquez.
Yes.
Second by Mr. Kennedy. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. All right, action item 7B, Lone Star Governance Policy Updates in Sections A, B, and G. Information begins on page 236 of our board packet.
Thank you. And this is, of course, what we've been working on with our Lone Star Governance. The goal was to make sure that our policy was clean and tight and really only had in there what's required by law or something that is just absolutely essential that the board needs to be making a public decision on. And so what we started with with TASB is just the review of A, B, and G. And as we walk through this, if we say that language needs to be removed or deleted, in most cases, that language will be shifting over to Board Operating Procedures or Regulation. So in most cases, that language is not truly being deleted from the world. It's just going to be shifting where it should be. And then you will see a few policies that we're not going to address because they're coming up in Update 109 and 110, or 110. So we will address those policy changes at that point. But if we go through, all of these are local policies, so they're, every single one is going to be your decision, and we have met with the policy committee, and they agree that we can accept all of TASB's recommendations except for one, and I will touch base on that when we get there. But I can just move through quickly, and y'all just stop me if you have any questions. On AB Local, that is just our district name, the legal name, and we are recommending that we keep that policy for clarity's sake, that we are Midland Independent School District. AE Local is our goals, and there is absolutely no recommendation to change AE Local. And so that needs to stay the same. BB Local is going to be updated in 110. BBD Local is a policy that goes over board member training and orientation. The recommendation is to delete this policy. The policy had in there saying that y'all as a board are going to be delegating to the superintendent to take your open records training. That has not been the standard for this board. You all have been personally trained, and so there's really not a need for a delegation policy because you all have taken on that duty and been personally trained. So this is one that would be recommended for deletion. BBE Local will be updated in 109. BBF Local is our policy on board member ethics, and that is something that is not required by law, and TASB is recommending deleting the policy, but absolutely not getting rid of our ethics policy completely, but shifting that over into Board Operating Procedures where it really should be. BFA is Ethics Conflict of Interest and Disclosures Policy, and on this one, it is not necessarily required by law. The TASB and the policy committee is recommending that we keep this policy. What it's stating is that you as a board are agreeing to cooperate when Darla says, "I need your conflict of interest statements. I need you to get this information for us so we can submit our information to TEA." BBG Local is about compensation and expenses. And so this is really, if you go to a conference and you're going to be reimbursed for any of those, there was a lot of details in there of how we're going to do that. That information is being suggested to be moved over to Board Operating Procedures.
There is no compensation, let's make that clear.
Just reimbursements, yes.
Okay.
But no monthly paycheck, I'm sorry. BBI Local is our Technology Resources and Electronic Communications Policy. This is where we disagreed with TASB. We have this policy for our board members that says if you have our technology, you have our emails, here is the rules that govern that. But we also have one in CQ for all of our staff members. And so TASB was thinking, "Well, if y'all are trying to reduce, then let's go ahead and just make CQ the staff member be staff and board." But really, our policy committee felt that it was really important that if something's going to be board-oriented, it needed to be in the B section because you would never think as a board member or as a citizen, "Well, I need to go check CQ to find out a rule regarding the board member." And so we thought it would be, while it is keeping a non-legally-required policy, we thought it was better for transparency to go ahead and keep that. So that is the one place we've disagreed with TASB. And BDAA went over the duties and requirements of board officers, and so we're still going to have a small section about saying that we're going to have a president, vice president, secretary, but moving some of the details, some of the duties of those jobs over to Board Operating Procedure. And then BDAE Local, this is for the duties and requirements of depository, and this is absolutely required, and we are not suggesting that that be changed at this time. BDB goes over board committees, and that is something that is not necessarily required to be in policy. So we're recommending that that be moved to Board Operating Procedures as well. BDD is a policy all about me and how y'all are going to guide my work and who can access legal counsel, and then how we would decide if we wanted to have outside counsel. And so at this point, we would recommend that that not be changed. BE Local is about board meetings, and it is not necessarily required to have all the information we have in our policy, but the policy committee really felt that it's important to have the descriptions of when we're going to have our meetings, how things get on the agenda, that that information is important and it provides transparency to our public. And BED Local is about public participation in our board meetings and how, what the guidelines are for our public forum. And so as long as we're going to have that as an option for the public, we felt it was very important that we kept this policy to provide transparency. BF is really just a policy that is not required by law, but it goes over exactly how our policies are organized and what you can find and you can see. So it's almost a Cliff Notes style of policy. So it is very important that we keep that one for transparency. BJA Local is the qualifications and duties of our superintendent, and so in theory, that is our superintendent's job description, and we do need to keep that in policy. BJCD is about the superintendent's evaluation, saying that you were going to evaluate him based on your goals, which are in AE Local, and then the job description that was in BJA. So that is another necessary policy. BJCF are the guidelines that the board would follow if they ever decided to non-renew a superintendent, and those are necessary and required by law in order to give people notice. And so that one needs to stay in as well. BP Local is about administrative regs, and so this one is not required, and we're suggesting that that move over to regs and Board Operating Procedure. BQ Local is about planning and decision-making processes at the district level, and it is required, we need to have that policy. And then BQA is, I'm sorry, that one's about the district-level planning and decision-making, and it is required, but they are going to, TASB is suggesting that we remove some of the unnecessary language, and the policy committee agreed with that. And BQB Local is the planning and decision-making process for the campus-based level, and that is the same suggestion, which is remove the unnecessary language. We need the policy, but maybe we could clean it up a little bit, and so that's their suggestion. GBBA will be updated in 109. And then GE Local is about relations with parent organizations. It's not necessarily required by law, but it is very helpful to ensure that the organizations that want to be tied to us, that they still have to have our mission at heart, and they need to make sure that they're complying with our regulations and policies as well. GF Local is our public complaint policy, and so this is not necessarily required, but it is very helpful to give people guidance and transparency in what to do if they want to make a complaint with the public, with us. GKA Local 109, well, I'm sorry, GKA Local will be updated in 109. And then GKB Local is our advertising and fundraising policy, and this one is also not required by law, but it is important that there is a board decision on this that tells us what can we advertise, what are we not allowed to do, and it provides us clear answers and transparency when someone wants to ask questions about advertising on our property. GKCC Local will be updated in 109. GKD Local is a policy that goes over the non-school use of our facilities. So if PTA wants to use it, the Boy Scouts wants to use it, what is required? TASB has updated to clarify that we are just having a limited public forum and to remove some of the unnecessary language. That language would be moved over to regs. GKDA is about the distribution of non-school literature. So when someone wants to send home a flyer to 25,600-something children and they want to have that access, what requirements must they meet? And it's not necessarily required by law, but it is very helpful for administration to have y'all's guidance and support in that. GKE Local will be updated in 109. And then GRA Local is not necessarily required by law, but it is very much necessary. It is our policy that governs our relations with governmental entities and state and local bodies, and so if somebody wants to come in and interview a child with another government entity, what are we going to do? Are they allowed to do that? Do we have to tell a parent? That policy guides us in that and lets us know what we need to do and what we're required to do. And so not required, but absolutely necessary. And so that is our Lone Star Governance Update 1. It took a lot of time and effort on TASB's parts to get through this, and we've kind of talked as a policy committee, and I think when we do C, D, E, and F, which are the monster policies, they're much, much bigger than these that we started with, that we're going to look and doing a policy review session instead of maybe just having TASB do an in-depth search, like, "Is this absolutely required by law?" Let's just look and say, "Is there fluff? Is there something we need to take out?" So that way, y'all's policy is just what it needs to be. And if it doesn't need to be in policy, let's move it to regs, let's do something else. But that way, your policy is clean as possible. And that's all I have.
Any questions?
I was going to see if she could repeat that again.
Whatever you'd like.
Any other questions? All right, this is an action item.
I'm of approval.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Nicholson, second by Mr. Fuller. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. All right, action item 7C, a resolution regarding the Midland Appraisal District Ballot. The proposed resolution that we're seeking to approve or disapprove appears on page 287 of our board packet. Ms. Moss?
Mr. Davis and board members, last month, the Midland Central Appraisal District asked the board to select three candidates to represent the district on their Board of Directors. Tonight, they've provided you an official ballot with MISD's three candidates listed for your selection. They also provided a resolution showing the 3,107 votes designated to Midland ISD. The resolution shows these votes distributed among the three district representatives. Mr. Kelly Cook, 1,035 votes, Mr. Michael Kaufman, 1,036, and Mr. Robert Kamich, 1,036. Administration recommends approval of the resolution as presented.
The resolved portion of the resolution reads as follows. Now therefore be a resolve, the Board of Trustees, having received its ballot and vote allocation of 3,107 votes from the chief appraiser, distributes its allocation to the following candidates on the lines that Ms. Moss just said. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Murray. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. All right, unfortunately, we have two more action items before we go to executive session. One is 7D, Teacher Contract Abandonment. One, good cause did not exist for resignation. And two, complaint and request for sanction to TEA regarding our grade. This is an action item.
Board members, there are item number D, the two that are submitted for sanctions. Each employee that resigns during the contract period is required to complete an exit interview with HR, and these two did not present just cause. In addition, at this point in the year, we are about, we began this year at 98.6% fill, and following the first day of school, eight FTEs were increased due to enrollment. And today, Mr. Bishop, we have 37 vacancies and as well, about 98.4% fill rate. And we have received about 38 resignations and retirement notices that have been submitted over the past three months, and so that concludes all of that information as well currently.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Action item 7E, another teacher contract abandonment. One, good cause did not exist for resignation. One, good cause did not exist for resignation. And two, complaint and request for sanction to TEA regarding A. Rentals for the same reasons that Mr. Bailey summarized earlier. Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. All right, it is now 7:00 PM on the dot, and we will go into closed session in accordance with Government Code Sections 551.071 through .074, 551.076, 551.0821 through .084. Thank you. It's 8:10 PM, we are emerging from closed session, and we are adjourned. Thank y'all very much.